Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call our meeting older. We have to stand for a pledge of allegiance. But before we stand, okay, you've got to remember 55, 60 years ago, December, in Port Harbor, we wouldn't be able to be able to stand right now without our veterans fighting the war for us. And let's just remember the number of people that died in Port Harbor, and the number of people that died during World War II, all the other wars going forward. And this is a special time, and let's stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Todd, would you read us some of the prayers?
I begin the prayer. Our gracious and countering heavenly Father, Lord, we seek guidance, we seek understanding, we're humbled by your presence. Lord, we ask that you will continue to have patience, we ask that you will continue to work with us, and continue to mold us, that we shall walk and react to situations, Lord, and the way that you would see us do so. We ask that you'll be with this council tonight as they go over the agenda, but we ask you to give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are in the best interest of your son, Jesus Christ. We ask all this in your name to pray only.
Amen. Next on the agenda is a special presentation. We have Robertson Palmer Cox present our audit.
Oh, I'm honored. Thanks for having me. The first thing I'll tell you is you should all have a handout in front of you, because it's all a presentation. And hopefully you've all gotten a copy of it, or recorded some of it in the past year or so. What I'll do is kind of walk you through this. I'm going to go over the entire presentation, I think you're about 30 pages here, so I know you probably want to get through your agenda. You did receive what we call a modified opinion, which means we believe the financial statements are materially correct. That being said, we did have some findings in the back of the report, primarily dealing with recommended adjusting entries, segregation duties, balancing your subsidiary measures to your control totals in the books, and just beginning a supplemental appropriation process. And what that is, where council approves appropriation prior to an expenditure, so you, in effect, adjust the budget. We had several departments that were over budget, so we want to point that out. If you look at page one in the handout, you're going to see some summary financial information, the cliff notes to the audit. The audit's about probably 100 or some pages, you can get the cliff notes down to one page for you. But we've got some important numbers here. At the top, we can see general fund balance from 2011 to 2018, a little trend information there. You can see back 2011, $299,000, 2018, $223,000. And really, we had the drop off from '17 to '18, primarily because you paid off a bond per $650,000 payment occurred during the year, so that drops your fund balance. Of that balance in 2018, the majority of that's actually either restricted or earmarked or something, so you don't have a whole lot in the way of unrestricted funds. Generally, we would want your general fund to have about $700,000 in unrestricted funds. So if we were to apply that to this 220, and add that to the $223,000, we'd like the general fund in its present state, we'd like to have about $1 million.
We would.
And that $700,000 unrestricted, the way we come up with that, we say the number was about 10% of your annual budget, a $70,000 general fund budget, so it gives you an operating for 5.2 weeks, a little over $1 million. So that's what we look for when we're working on these audits. And I will take, and I'll hit that in a second, but once I kind of get through the numbers. Water and sewer fund net assets, the next row down, $3.9 million at the end of the year. And when we say net assets, all right, so the general fund was more or less on a modified cash basis, so that's, everybody obviously has cash basis accounting or modified cash basis. The enterprise funds are on full and full, meaning all your water lines, sewer lines, all that good stuff, you have an appreciated value, and that's included in this number here. So, the next line down, I'll show you total cash investments for all your funds at the end of the year was $613,000. And you can apply that same metrics to cash in the water sewer fund, you might have at least 10% of their annual operating budget, just for operational cash flow. Total outstanding debt at the end of the year, four million dollars, it's the second line down in green. And then I give you some information about your pension liabilities and your OPAB liabilities, post-employment benefit liabilities. The pension liabilities, they're in parentheses there, that means they actually have a pension asset at BRS. You're one of the few communities, I work with it, that has an asset up there. Most localities have an unfunded pension obligation, but you guys have actually overfunded your slightly. Perhaps not after the market's turboled the last week or so. I expect that number may turn negative next year. Your OPAB liabilities, general fund and water sewer fund, essentially providing, allowing retirees to tell the copenures plan, and your line of duty act liabilities, that's a, essentially a, almost a retirement plan for the line of duty folks if they're entered in the line of duty. And you have an account up at BRS, and it's underfunded presently. If we look down at the graph below, I've kind of graphed out some of this information for you. And what you can see is that your general fund debt, as well as your fund balance, kind of dropped at the same angle. It's kind of hard to see, pick out all the colors, but you can kind of see they went down in tandem, and that's because you paid off that $650,000 note during the year. And kind of, I'll stop there for a second. Kind of what we recommend for localities that has a fund balance that's not quite as high as we like it to be, is to take kind of look out and do almost a five-year budget. We call it a financial forecast, and we'll email a sample to Todd tomorrow. But what you do is you project out your operating expenses, you project out your operating revenues, and see if you have a surplus there, if you're ready for the surplus to be used to pay down debt or for capital items. If you don't have a surplus, that tells you you've got to either cut costs, run off the map, or raise revenues. You've got capital items, which, then you plug in your capital items, your must haves, and you figure out where your tax rates seem to be to fund all these things. But I really think, because you're not going to be able to build that fund balance to $1 million in a year or two years or three, it's going to take some time. But I think if you start to do a forecast and look out five years, and set a target at the end of year five, then it's doable. If you try to do it all in one year, trying to know where you want, it's just not feasible, it's almost impossible. The next page in the forecast, I'm sorry, not in the forecast, the presentation goes over just the implementation of these new governmental accounting standards, 75 and 85, and we show what the liabilities that we're now recording on the books for post-employment benefit plans. And we also show the impact of raising the discount rate used to calculate those liabilities by 1% and decreasing by 1%. So those liabilities are way out in the future, we projected those costs out into the future, your actuaries have projected those costs, and then they're discounted back to today's dollars. The next couple pages are just the management comments from the audit. I'm not going to go through all of these. I think on page seven, probably the most important one, and I think it would really address the bulk of these comments, is just for the town, and it's an ending and to kind of work up a closing process, monthly closing process, and an annual closing process, and do things to tie your subsidiary ledgers back to your balance sheet, things like that. Reconcile your billings to collections for water and sewer, for taxes, for your EMS billings. But really, just a monthly and annual closing process, and have a checklist, these are the things we're going to do, once we do them, we're going to check them off, and move on. So, I think that would probably eliminate 75% of those management recommendations that we have. The next two pages, we do a report to BRS. We come in and test, and we make sure you don't have any employees in the BRS system that don't work for you anymore, things like that. BRS did find, not here, but in other places, had people in the system that shouldn't have been in the system, and actually, it's my understanding, they had someone receiving benefits that wasn't eligible for these benefits because their locality never took them task. They continued to make retirement contributions for this person, that person did 30 years of service, even though they didn't really work 30 years, and they took retirement. So, BRS now has this testing data in the BRS system to make sure that your employees are alive and here, to make sure their birthday is correct and things like that. So when BRS calculates the liability for that employee, they know it's correct. Pages 10, really going through 21, excuse me, is our letter to those charged with governance. And if we came into an audit and people just didn't agree with us or something like that, didn't provide documents, we report to you here. We didn't have any problem with your staff, if we asked for something, they were, they really didn't do a job getting information to us. So you guys get the board play letter. Also included with that letter is a list of the recommended audit adjustments that remain to your books, that have been performed with governmental accounting standards. And then the last several pages, page 22, to the end of the handout, those are new governmental accounting standards that are coming out in the next couple of years, I just want to let you know they're out there, so you start thinking about them. The most challenging one is the asset retirement obligation, which basically says if you've got an asset that has to be taken out of service at some point, and I use an example of a dam. Whenever you decide to decommission a dam, you actually have to take it now and restore the stream or river to its natural state. So, this new standard says that at some point in the future, you've got an asset, you've got to decommission, perhaps underground storage tanks or something like that as well. You've got to project the cost of decommissioning that asset, and then bring it back and put it on your books today, and let that liability grow over time until, for the remaining life of the asset. So if you have an asset you're going to take out of service, believe it or not, in 30 years, you start reporting a liability today for that, and let it build over time, such that you have that liability fully engaged, if you will, once the time comes to take that asset out of service.
For depreciation or in reverse.
It's depreciation in reverse, we're doing that for liabilities now. So, it's just something to think about, and thought to think about. If you have anything, the DEQ or the EPA requires that you take out of service once you're no longer using it, this standard is going to hit you in a couple of years. And in most cases, you're probably going to have an engineer to estimate what that future cost is going to be to take it out of service. So, it's going to be probably a bit of a challenging standard for some folks. The other standards that are back there, I don't think are going to be of significant importance. I'll kind of stop there and answer any questions you have.
Do you have any questions?
Do you know anything that we have that will need to be decommissioned?
As soon as treatment lands, and I'm not sure if they have to be decommissioned.
But we won't shut it down, though, we're just going to upgrade it, right?
We're just looking at, we're waiting on, see how much free money we can get coming.
I think if you do have to decommission it, even if you had no intention of decommissioning at this point, if someone says, well, this useful life is only 30 or 40 years, then you can still have to start recording liability.
Isn't that everything out there, though?
Well, only if it's a man dig. So if you get into a car, you don't have to, you know.
Like our dam, or sewage treatment plant, or water tank, and so on.
Probably a lot of that stuff is governed by the EPA, I'm just not sure, or DEQ. So, probably giving them a call and say, hey, what do we have to decommission, what do we take out of service? And how much is the other cost? Can you just, can you decommission it and just clean it up and leave it, or do you have to actually tear it down to take it completely off the mass of?
We've got a couple, we've got a couple structures we've been looking at. These Gatsby rules that come out every year, you know, I can remember back when I started a little ago, you'd get an audit, and then it'd be 10 pages long. Now you get an audit, and you actually have to find, and it's like a book, and the ability to maneuver through it is very tricky if you don't stay standard with the Gatsby rules that come out. We've got a couple of structures in the town, such as the water tanks over in North Tasswell, that we'll have to be looking at, but we need to get a little more educated on these things, so.
I would agree with Todd, he's right, maybe not 10 pages long, but when I started 27 years ago, these things were maybe 25, 30 pages long, you're up to 92 pages.
He's a lot older.
He is probably a lot older. But we're up to 92 pages for the town of Tasswell, and we've got counties now that are well over 200 pages, they're financial reports. So I'll leave it, if there's any more questions?
I have a question. Back on that first page, when you look at the total cash investment line, is there one or two major things that drop it from 1.2 to 615?
One, it's just that. Yeah, it's just the $650,000 payout from that. Yeah, but, you know, you can kind of look at that two ways. You really didn't have an impact from 2017 to 2018, while your fund balance dropped, you paid off the $650,000 on that. So 2017 was really not much different than 2018, but having ended the year, you know, I would, again, just reiterate that, you know, we'd like to see about $700,000 in unrestricted, undesignated, just for cash flow purposes, in the general fund, and same for the law system. We need to see that number up.
I can't think of a business that wouldn't like to do this.
Yeah, pretty much every, I could.
You know, the perception of debt, Chris, and that's a good question that you ask, the perception of debt for someone that looks at the audit, and they're not going back through the full audit, and they see that, you know, we may get grants in the middle of the fiscal year, and we may not spend them until the next fiscal year, which is exactly what happened with that loan payoff. So, three years ago, we did a $900,000 GEO loan, and we paid it off. We had your debt service, and we paid it off, so it makes it look like an expenditure, which if you look at, is close to a million dollars. But there's a lot of things, the Aqua Block is a good example. It was a July budget, but we started working on it, you could walk on late when we started working on it, you know, it froze over. So those monies just lapped into different years, and the perception of it can be pretty wicked if you're not knowledgeable of the government's practices.
Yeah, I agree with Todd, the general fund, since you're on a modified cash basis, when you get loan proceeds, that increases your fund balance, that when you pay off, it decreases your fund balance. It's not like a terrible business where you show, you get that money, you show us a liability, you don't show us a revenue or a receipt. So it's a little different. But, I mean, I think the one thing that, you know, my strong recommendation is to kind of do that five-year budget, and figure out what your capital needs are, and figure out a way to slowly build those cash balances over the next five years. And if you want to take it out, you can even, I've seen people do a 20-year forecast, but that's looking out so far in the future, that's, you're really guessing. The other thing I will point on on that first page, your debt per capita, while those cash balances are not where we want it to be, your debt levels really aren't that high for a town. Back when we had comparative information from the state on just debt, the state was averaging about $2,000 per capita, debt per capita. And you guys ended 2017, I don't have a population estimate for 2018 yet, but you were $1,148. So those debt numbers are lower than what the old state average was. I will point out that part of that increase is being driven by these population estimate decreases. So you've got, you know, population 2011 was estimated 4,600, and now we're just under 4,400 in 2017. So, the incremental cost per taxpayer to operate the town is actually going up, and that's what we're seeing in almost southwest Virginia. Our cost to operate is going up on a per taxpayer basis, maybe not total, on a per taxpayer basis it is, so.
And a big impact on that's a population estimate that you see there. So you've got a cost, but when you're reducing per capita, the, by the way, the rain, the hotel parking garage, they estimated $15 million capital improvement project at the sewer plant. He just said we were lower, I like that. Wait two years and look at that all. It's not going to last forever.
But the other side of that coin is what you've said these last several years, if you're not growing, you're dying.
You're right, you know, there's no question about it.
That shows it right there, if you're not growing, you're dying.
A locality that ceases to grow will eventually cease to exist, and that's a fact. If you don't grow, you've got to raise taxes. You can't do it either.
And that population is not just here, it's Tasswell, it's Virginia. It's, we're seeing it everywhere, we're seeing, basically the last five, six years, we've seen, honestly, the urbanization of Virginia, the folks who are moving to the urban centers, they're just not staying in the small towns, rural communities, towns. We're seeing that in a lot of places. No, you're not, it's not unique, there's a macro environment out there that is impacting pretty much almost all of southwest Virginia.
Any other questions?
You might want to go home, man.
I know, it's a race, I'm sure. We have to fit, and you can use your hands.
Thank you very much.
You're absolutely welcome.
We don't need to blow it on the interest business, it's a bit your own, and it is, you can't change it, whether you like it or not.
You both can give us that 70. I will tell you guys, my contact information on the front page, I'm here to help you anyway I can, and, you know, don't worry about the town, if you call with a question, don't worry about the town getting billed for that. You're not alone, so I'll help you anyway I can.
Yeah, I know Todd and Leanne, I really enjoyed working with y'all, thank you for a good job.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is.
Good job.
Tonight, I want us to recognize two longtime members of our town council, our mayor, Mr. Donnie Buchanan, and Councilman Jack Murray. Mayor Buchanan leaves after serving on the council or as mayor for 16 years. Mayor Buchanan, I should say that Donnie Buchanan, during that time, most of that time, that 16 years, served as mayor. And he became mayor here during a very dark time in our town's history, and that was just a few years ago, seven years ago to be exact, when Dr. Charles Brownstaff, who was then mayor, died suddenly that December. And Donnie stepped up and took the position of mayor, and after that was elected to that position several times. Councilman Murray was first elected to council in 2010, and he has served the town now for eight and a half years. During their time on council and as mayor, these two gentlemen have helped put the town on a sure financial footing. In fact, what we heard tonight, we would not have heard when they first were on council. They put the town on that financial footing, and turned the phrase that we often heard, nothing ever happens in Tasswell, to the question that we're often asked now, what are you all doing to make things happen in Tasswell? It's happening in Tasswell. Why? Right here, two reasons. We thank you both for your great contributions to our community and to our town. And at this time, I'm going to ask them to join me one at a time at the front, so I can recognize them and we can present them with some gifts from the town. This plaque is presented to Donnie Buchanan Jr. in recognition of his many years of outstanding service and dedication to the town of Tasswell, Virginia, and his commitment to our citizens and the prosperity of our town. Served as member of the town council from July 1st, 2002, to January 12th, 2010. Served as vice mayor from January 12th, 2010, to December 3rd, 2011. Served as mayor from December 11, or excuse me, December 3rd, 2011, to December 31st, 2018. Donnie and I go way back. I'm pleased that I had the opportunity to work with him on council here for the past several years, but we actually go back a little bit further than that, since we were born within days of each other.
He's older.
And I'm older. Days, however. We went to school together, we graduated together in the class of 1973 at Tasswell High School, and I respected him from the very beginning. And I have also learned to respect him as a fellow council member and mayor during the past several years. So we would like to thank Donnie, tonight, Mayor Buchanan, for his service to this town. Councilman Murray, would you join me?
Go ahead.
I'd like to read this plaque as well. Presented to Jack Murray Sr. in recognition of his many years of outstanding service and dedication to the town of Tasswell, Virginia, and the commitment to our citizens, his commitment to our citizens and the prosperity of our town. Serving the town of Tasswell, Virginia, as a member of the town council from July 1st, 2010, through December 31st, 2018. Jack and I were acquaintances, I knew him if I ran into him, but we didn't go back quite as far as Donnie and I did, although I knew him as a resident and active member of our community, but we were elected to town council at the same time. And since that time, I have learned to really gain a lot of respect and admiration for Jack. He often kept us on track when we were excited, he would calm us down and get us right back in the right direction, and we appreciate that, appreciate his efforts on town council.
Jack, would you like to say something?
I'm going to say so. I would, we would miss, but it's been an honor to be the mayor of Tasswell, it's been an honor to serve on the council. I'm humble about it. I'm not one to shop itself out as the greatest thing in the world or whatever, sort of a team player. But I'd, I'd like to thank my wife, my family first, for putting up with 16 years of coming meetings. I actually missed one meeting, that was last year, and that was because I was at Compton Plateau, I wanted to vote for Sunset Communications. It's just me, you know, I'm always at work, and always supporting the town of Tasswell. You know, 16 years ago, we got into this, and we were sort of sitting, not doing much, and I look back and see what we accomplished while I was on council. And probably the two biggest things was, was supporting the YMCA and getting that off the ground, and also, we actually had a water replacement around town that helped a lot of the citizens. But, you know, it was a sad day when I became mayor, you know, I was up there in the meeting park with Dr. Brownstaff on that day, and he died. But, you know, one of the things he said was, his favorite quote is, once a bulldog, always a bulldog. always a bulldog." And I honestly believe, I want to add one other thing, I believe in Tassau. I always will believe in Tassau. The things we've accomplished in seven years is unreal. We were in debt, highly in debt. We got out there, coming that low opinion of fruit. And without the council, we had Dave, the ones that was here before, we couldn't have done that without them. You know, they're all team players. And that's what it takes. Takes a lot of team players to make it happen in Tassau. And the first thing I did in time, when I was mayor, was I said, "We go fix something, Todd. We're gonna fix our relationship with the county." So, we got Jim Spencer, my times, myself, Todd, we sat down here in this office for about three hours, and we patched up some things. And then the next thing we did, we got a, we made a work of American Legion, two times, citizens meeting. How can we improve Tassau? And it was a hit. And I think that's what started off the ball rolling. We got enthused. Town got enthused. Sometimes you get enthused with different things, and we got enthused about the Y. Everybody got enthused about wanting to make Tassau better. So, we started helping ourselves. Sure enough, the state started helping us with a little bit more money. The government started helping us with a little bit more money. So, we got the pave, we got a few other things, we got the train station. And it's a great thing that you got the citizens working together, and I think that's the key. And I think that's one thing I'm glad that I was mayor about. You know, we've done a lot. We had to welcome the town signs, improved our infrastructure. We bought two new far trucks, I mean, far trucks, we had far trucks the last, when we first had, two new garbage trucks, a couple of other things, improved our public works, improved our police force, improved our rescue squads. Got over $19 million in grants. That's a pretty good run, and I'm proud to be part of that run. Now, I'm gonna say something sort of silly here, and I've told Todd this story a couple of times about a visit to Tassau. You know, seven years ago, we couldn't even buy a software on Main Street. Then we got a software machine at the mini park, so you could go across the street and buy something. But it's changed, okay? It's changed a lot today. So, I'm gonna go back in history, and this is a fictional story. And imagine sitting on top of the peak, looking down Tassau. Or you're looking on Bay Street, looking at Dog Rock. You're looking on Goose Creek, you're looking west. You just think, I mean, that's, it's beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful. It's God's country. When I go traveling, I tell them that. This is God's country. You've gotta come to Tassau. It's unbelievable. You go on Main Street, look west, the most photographic thing you ever seen is Main Street, Tassau, looking west. Sometimes when you have a rainbow, that citizen gets on the historical society, goes out of the direction, it's unbelievable. This picture's a hairy show here for the train station. This thing is unbelievable. And, you know, I'm proud to be part of Tassau. But picture yourself, all right? You got this New York Times article, Back of the Dragon, and you got two guys, two people in New York City. And one guy's named Henry Tassau Day, and the other person there is Mary Period. And they was in a relationship, but they didn't know anything about Tassau. You know, Henry Tassau's dad had Tassau, had a name after him. Mary Period was related to Mary Period. So, they got this article about Back of the Dragon, New York Times, on the slot board. And they was talking, they saw this one guy. This is a real guy, called Isaac Sees, he was working in either city. He has to be related, related to the Wits at Pratt and Fortune Museum. So, it was all tied, tied in together. So, next summer, they came to come to Tassau, and they was riding motorcycles, and so they could come across the mountain. First thing they do is go down to Pratt and Fortune Museum, go by there, look at that, go by Pisky Church, then go by the welcome sign, come by, get off the exit. So happens to fare us in town, at the fairgrounds. So, they come on up to the road, little game's going on, and you stop at the Back of the Dragon welcome sign. So, they get all the information, and they go up, make reservations at the old town. So, they go there, get something to eat, they go up to Reno's Win, and go back the next day, fresh it up, go up to Historical Society, find all about the information. And they realize that Gavro's Period's house was out there at Dr. Hunter's house. So, they go visit Hunter's house, and they go on out to the Jimbo and see those houses. Come back up and eat dinner at seven. But the next day, they go out and visit some more, go out to Lincolnshire Park, go out to walk around the lake, go down to the train station, and by then, the train station's finished, and it was buzzing. A lot of people, I carry. So, they hear their, you know, I said, "I think this is a good place to live." So, Henry asks Mary to marry him, and she says yes. So, they go up to courthouse, get their marriage license. So, he didn't have much in his motorcycle pack, and he has to buy some gifts, so he goes down between friends and buys her gifts, and goes up to Bliss on Main and buys her wedding, wedding dress. And goes up to Flowers on Main and buys flowers. So, he had to go out to JR Gold and buy her, buy his wedding. Well, I don't think he didn't have a Tassau, since the metro department went out of businesses, he didn't have a place to buy his suit jacket. So, he had to go down to the Simon's store to find him his suit jacket. So, he comes back up and gets, goes to Main Street Church and gets married. And then he, so happens, he goes down to the Prayna Creek after he gets married and has his dinner, and so happened, we have a cruise here on Main Street. Donnie gave his group a beach night, paying his plans, so he dances night away on Main Street. And so, they decided, one more day or two days, they go down to see Betty Pike, and look at some houses, and so happened, they buy the AZ business house of Paul Mary and Ellen right next to Nancy there. They live at Happy Ever After. When them dies, they go get, they get buried at, they had to go to the Pierce and Saint Thurgood, which is a funeral home. And they're buried at Maplewood Cemetery, right by Godhead Period. So, it's all about Tassau. So, I'm proud to be part of Tassau. I told you I had that story a little bit. I hope you enjoyed that. I've actually enjoyed my time as a mayor and serving the council, and I hope the town council has enjoyed myself as a servant for the town. Thank you very much.
Jack, you wanna talk about it? I don't believe I've talked it. As I told them when they had to meet the candidates, I'm not a part of it. I don't have all that stuff to talk about. I have served eight and a half years. It has been my pleasure to serve the people of Tassau. I have done what I thought was right and what I thought was good for the town. One of the things I'm proud of is when I came on the council, and Mr. Mullins came on the council, the council didn't work too good yet. But in the last seven years, it has worked great, and we've made some accomplishments. Before I came on the council, I couldn't see Tassau doing anything. If you said you couldn't get a drink uptown, you couldn't do anything. But we have made progress, and I hope the town will continue to progress from this point on. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to business. Okay, approval of the minutes for the council meeting, November 13th. Do I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? You're not called for a vogue, on your favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of the financial statements. The financial report, November 18th.
So moved.
You have a second.
Second.
Any questions? You're not called for a vogue, on your favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the town manager's update on ongoing projects.
Mayor, I don't have any to discuss.
Okay, all right. We have a committee conference updates. Planning Commission, Councilman Murray.
Planning Commission did not meet this month, so I don't have one.
Okay, Train, the committee.
Train Station Committee met this weekend, and we discussed and reviewed the images for the train station walls. We're now accepting artifacts and donations to display at the train station. The engraved bricks that will be optional, people can give the support of the train station are still available. How much are they?
Fifty.
Fifteen dollars.
Fifty.
Fifty dollars. Fifty dollars, not fifteen, there's no Christmas special. They're fifty dollars. You can get those online, you can get the form online, you can purchase them here at the town hall, and the cutoff date for that is January 15th. So, we can go ahead and get those on order pretty soon. If you want a good Christmas gift, they're still available. I also shared with the council tonight and the train station committee this weekend, and by the way, this weekend, with a major winter storm impacting or coming at any time, we still had seven people to show up Saturday for the train station committee meeting, which I thought was great. And we looked at, reviewed the images that were on the walls and approved everything that we had previously selected. The images are gonna look something like this. This is a small image to show you what it's gonna look like, this issue, the style, how it's gonna be installed on the walls of the train station. And I also have here details of the locations and the images that are going into the station. If anyone's interested, they may feel free to review those if they'd like. Those are the ones that the train station committee reviewed this weekend and the town council reviewed this evening.
We don't have any of business, so we'll move on to the business. The old Rainey lot purchase, approval of the rate return.
Okay, if you recall, at the November meeting, council gave Manhattan's direction to proceed with the purchase enclosure of the old former Rainey lot, Buchanan's lot. The purchase price we agreed on, seller's $300,000. I will say that in June of 17, the appraisal value was north of 1.3 million. So, we have done as council has directed. I've got quotes from four different banks, with National Banks meeting all the qualifications and being the most competitive rates. I want also let council know that because of the upcoming bonds, it will be reviewed with the next council, the projects. I'm doing a revenue bond on this one. The reason for that is it does not go against your bond inability. You've got in your packet the numbers that were delivered through National on their last page that gives you a monthly breakdown. I've also identified a unbudgeted line item in the budget that we will not be utilizing this fiscal year. It's got north of $50,000 line, and that was the trail, the trail that we've been looking at for a couple of years. If you'll recall, my last presentation to council was we will be seeking grants. And right now, we are simultaneously working on three different funding grants for that trail. So, with that being said, we've obviously got the funds to cover us through this fiscal year. We will obviously budget next fiscal year. So, I just need a motion to accept the qualifying offer from National Bank.
Do we need to pick an option?
Well, I'm gonna recommend option three for obvious reasons. And you do, that was gonna be my next, but you do, you have to pick one of the three. I don't know what the future's gonna hold with that lot. I don't have any definitive direction on how to proceed with that lot. There's a lot to talk about, and you, council will get less with that topic. The IDA will meet tomorrow and follow right in behind council with some of this paperwork. So, my recommendation, obviously, is to extend it out as far as you can. It may be that the IDA may, you may give direction to the IDA to lose that property, and then again, we may hang on to it for the best interest of economic development. So, refinancing's always a target in the future if we need to do so. But because it's unbudgeted and the line item we're using, knowing what's out there, I recommend option three.
I'll make a motion, and we accept option three. National Bank.
National Bank.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. On my favor, say aye. We need a discussion first. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need to have a vote call.
Please do.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is the approval of the resolution.
Okay, you've got a bunch of information in here that I had Chris Paul put together for you. Most of it that you have in front of you right now is redundant, but it will be a model that will be given to us in the next couple of weeks if this closing takes place prior to the new year. Most of it is in there for your information only. However, the first page has a resolution on it that I would ask Mr. Pike to read, and you don't have to sign it. That's the practice that we have with resolutions. It's not bond cancels practice, but we do need a vote to proceed forward to closure, and the IDA will get a similar document tomorrow night. So, Brad, I would ask if you could read that.
Gentlemen, I'll do this as quickly as I can. It's rather adept, but I'm gonna do my best to make it as understandable as possible. Resolution authorized the execution of agreement provided for non-binding undertaking of the town of Tassau, Virginia to consider certain appropriations to the Industrial Economic Development Authority of the town of Tassau, Virginia, and agree to certain matters related to the issuance and sale by such authority of revenue bonds to finance the acquisition and development of certain real property. Whereas, the Industrial Economic Development Authority of the town of Tassau, Virginia, the authority pursuant to the Industrial Development and Revenue Bond Act, under which it is created, is authorized to exercise all the power set forth in the act, which include, among other things, the powers to acquire, improve, maintain, equip, lease, and dispose of properties to the end that the authority may be able to protect and promote tourism and economic development in Commonwealth, to make loans, finance, or refinance authority facilities for use by, among others, a town to issue its revenue bonds, notes, or other obligations from time to time for such purposes, and to pledge all or any part of its revenues in proceeds derived from payments received by the authority in connection with its loans or from the uses by the authority of such facilities or from any source as security for the payment and principal of and amongst on any such obligations. Whereas, the town of Tassau, Virginia desires to request the authority to issue a series of revenue bonds and notes in an estimated maximum principal amount of $300,000 to finance in part the cost to acquire certain real property located on Thinkas Returnway in North Tassau, Virginia, and to develop such property for use as a sports and fitness center, community center, or other governmental purpose. And whereas, the authority has obtained a loan commitment from National Bank of Waxburg, Virginia for the purchase of the bonds, and the bank has indicated its agreement to purchase the bonds will be conditioned upon the town's undertaking and non-binding undertaking to appropriate from time to time monies to the authority if needed in connection with debt service payments due on the bonds and related payments. Whereas, the council for the town desires to enter into a support agreement with the authority and the bank with respect to the bonds, setting forth the town's agreement to undertake such a non-binding undertaking, and whereas, there has been presented to this meeting a draft form of support agreement between the council, the authority, and the bank to be used for the bonds. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the town of Tassau, Virginia. One, is determined to be in the best interest of the town and its citizens for the council to request the authority to undertake the project and to finance in part the cost of such project by the issuance of the bonds. Further, the council hereby determines that it is in the best interest of the town and its citizens for the town to support the project by entering into a support agreement in connection with the issuance by the authority of the bonds. Two, in consideration of the authority's undertakings with respect to financing the project, the mayor and vice mayor, common of either of whom may act, are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver a support agreement in connection with the issuance of the bonds. to execute and deliver a support agreement in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Support agreement shall be in substantially the form presented to this meeting, which is hereby approved with such completions, omissions, assertions or changes not inconsistent with this resolution as may be approved by the mayor or vice mayor. The execution thereof by such officer to constitute conclusive evidence of his approval of such completions, omissions, assertions or changes. Three, the town manager is hereby authorized and directed to carry out the obligations imposed by the support agreement on the town manager. Four, as provided by the support agreement, the council hereby undertakes a non-binding undertaking to appropriate to the authority such amounts as may be requested from time to time pursuant to support agreement to the fullest degree and in such manner as is consistent with the constitution and laws of Oregon, Virginia. The council, while recognizing that it is not empowered to make any binding commitment to make such appropriations in future fiscal years, hereby states its intent to make such appropriations in future fiscal years and hereby recommends that future councils do likewise during the term of support agreement. Five, the council on behalf of the town hereby agrees to do issuance by the authority of the bonds provided that A, the original aggregate principal amount of such bonds does not exceed $300,000, B, the term of the bonds does not exceed 180 months from the date of issuance, and C, the initial interest rate on the bonds does not exceed 4.27% per year, subject to adjustment after the first five years. Six, the town and all its subordinate issuing entities or authorities, including the authority, have not issued and are not reasonably expecting to issue or prove in either calendar year 2018 or 2019 a principal amount of tax exempted obligations exceeding the aggregate $10 million taken into account of this bond. Accordingly, the council hereby concurs with the authority's intention to designate the bonds as qualified tax exempted obligations under section 265b 3b of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended for out of calendar year 2018 or 2019. Seven, all resolutions are parts thereof in conflict here with or hereby repealed. Eight, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Brad.
You have a vote call, move.
Yes, I have. We have that motion first. Have a motion to adopt this resolution.
Soon moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? You're now called for a vote, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. It will be approved at a later date for the IDA. Next is the approval of the revised Employee Drug Alcohol Substance Abuse Policy. I think you get to read a lot of time.
I am not reading this entire. In conjunction with Lee Ann and Robin, I have put together a new proposed Drug Alcohol Substance Abuse Policy for the town that basically revises the existing one in place, which was put in place 15 years ago. There have been some substance changes in the law with regard to both, I guess in terms of the criminal code that's been enacted in terms of changes, but there's also been a lot of changes in the testing policies and the available resources that are now to be utilized by the town in dealing with the enforcement of its drug policy for its employees. One of the biggest things that I was asked to go back and amend from the initial policy done in 2003 was to make the town's policy a zero tolerance policy. Most of the changes that are here really reflect a combination of different policies from around the area, the municipalities that have found to work over the course of the last several years. And also again, these incorporation of the screening processes and the testing processes that are used by the lab that the town currently uses to scrub.
There's some allied lab.
Allied labs. So that there, since there are different drugs out there that need to be tested for, the testing policies and protocols have changed and this policy recognizes those for the purposes of giving all current employees and all prospective employees who are seeking to be hired by the town basically notice of what the town expects in terms of how they're going to be tested, how the random testing is going to be basically implemented, and that they are expected to basically read through, ask any questions about the policy before signing it, before one, if you seek new employment, or two, asking to be maintained as a current employee. It will be the policy areas that once adopted tonight, all current employees are subject to it, all prospective employees will be subject to it, and any refusal by any current employee to basically follow the terms of the implemented policy will result in the immediate dismissal. So I think it's a proper stance for your council to take this. It's one where your citizens are owed the confidence and trust from its administrative body that they're taking seriously, that the welfare the citizens require and that the employees must adhere to it.
Okay. Do you have to give notice to the employees? We forward.
They all have to sign.
What happened? All right, you have before you the revised Employee Drug Alcohol Substance Policy, you have a motion to adopt.
Soon moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this too.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next is the resolution seeking planning, design, grant, funding, update the waterline mapping, hydraulics and leak detection.
Just like any state or federal money, when they want to give it to you, they want council to approve that they give it to you. Whereas the town of Tassau has applied for funding for various drinking water projects in the town, whereas Virginia Department of Health, specifically the Office of Drinking Water, has funded several drinking water projects in the town. Therefore be it resolved, the town of Tassau, council hereby votes to seek planning and design grant funding from the office of the following projects. Update waterline mapping, hydraulics and leak detection of the town's water system, estimated cost of $35,000 is what we're applying for. Therefore be it resolved that the town manager immediately begin the process of funding applications for this project and be authorized to sign any and all documents to accept such grant funding contingent upon review.
You have a motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion to adopt.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is a request from the back of the drag.
I'll just give you an update on that. I'm not in a position yet to ask for a vote by any means, but I do have a request from the back of the drag to possibly purchase the Little League Field. And I actually think that there is indeed restriction. I have not had an opportunity to look at that, but I will bring that back obviously to the new council. So it is a request from the back of the drag. The next one, mayor, we already have that one budgeted.
Okay.
So I would ask to remove that one.
Okay.
And proceed to the other.
Next is a donation request from the THS competition charity.
Okay, obviously you've got a letter in your packet. I'm really not staying, but our cheerleaders went to a competition and they brought home a win. So they're, I think they're going to represent us again and the estimated cost of that trip is $16,000. There's 18 girls involved and I think that puts us in a category of...
Fifty to 300.
Fifty to 300, good job. Everybody, you want to proceed?
Blowing up that budget, right?
I don't think it's blown up, but you're taking pretty good.
You have about $8,900 spent and you have a budget of 15.
I move that we give him $300.
Second. You have a motion to second. Any other discussion? You're now called for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is the council amendment procedure discussion.
Cancel, a couple of weeks ago, we received a resignation letter from council person, Ms. Boyd. I asked for directions to cancel. Cancel approved steps of requesting via social media, letters of interest, and we have received a number of letters of interest. And I would obviously recommend that you do not discuss those in open form out of respect to the candidates. Go into executive session and do that. It's hard for me to recommend or let the people know how you're going to proceed. So there's a lot of routes you go. I just want to, I just want to let you know and let the people that are here know, there are no guidelines for this other than cancel does have to appoint. They can go through an interview process, they can make a motion right now to appoint the position. So I'm not sure yet on how they're going to proceed, nor do I have a interest in wanting that. But I will do as the best I can to communicate with the public on how they're moving forward. That's all. Yeah.
You have Brad can comment on the... Just for the public's information, the council is not governed necessarily by its charters to how numerous, basically, the vacancy is filled. It is governed strictly by state code now. It used to be that our charter allowed for the provision of a replacement of a vacant position. But now Virginia code actually, it's 24.2-266. Basically, the council's required to petition the court within 15 days of notice of vacancy and ask basically for a regular election. And then the council itself has 45 days for the notice of the vacancy, in terms of the resignation, to appoint someone new to fulfill the unexpired portion of the term of the person who resigned. So whatever the council does to fulfill, to select this new person within the 45 days, then they can only, there will only be an office to fulfill Ms. Boyd's unexpired term and there'll have to be another election. That next election is actually scheduled actually for November the 5th of 2019. And then they will only hold at that office for, I think that will be for one year. So you'll have an appointment that will occur by this council, they'll have to then run for election for that expired term in November, and then they'll have to run again after another year. And it's one where the circuit court will only get involved if the majority of the members cannot agree on the replacement, for the temporary replacement for that term early run from January until November next year. So it is governed strictly by state code.
After they're done tonight with the, whatever they decide to do with the letters, I can and will send out a letter to the media and let you know how the council elected to proceed and how we move forward.
Frank, if the person who's elected in November would take office immediately?
Yes, but they're only going to be there then for one year. No, they take office, Janey, we're in first. What the council does is you...
You said through an member's house, just one...
That's where I was confused. So, because you said first, you said whoever we appoint will be, will be, will take Jennifer's position until the end of her term.
And that was my mistake, that's what I said. It'll only cover the time from when the council appoints until the next general election.
Okay.
Which is...
Not the end of her term.
Not the end of her term, I'm sorry if I've come this far.
It might be in the next year. That's correct.
No, no, it'll just, it'll run for...
For 11 months?
It's 11 months, then another, then an election, and then they will fulfill that for a year. Because then they'll have to run if they decide that they want to run again.
Then they only get one year?
The remainder of her term. And by the way, that will be the first time that we've ever had a special election in the history of town that.
That's because the code of Virginia changed.
Yeah, correct.
But there's other things.
There's elections.
Well, there's elections every two years anyway, but it's still...
Does it cost the town an extra money to do this election?
Um, maybe a little bit, but it's classified as a special election for us because we normally wouldn't have any money on there.
Things are a little bit rough, not minimum in favors, are we?
No, I mean, it's almost...
And they need to understand.
Yeah, yeah. So did the people that submitted, did they get, was this explained to them?
All of them was sent the same letter that I sent to media, which, it's a little convoluted. So I would encourage council to, a little convoluted.
Charter used to specify, and that's where I misspoke, our charter used to allow for the appointment by the council for the remainder of the unexpired term. And the state code superseded that. Do you remember, we went through this with council with blanket shifts resignation? And we had to go through and it got put back on for that next election. Of course, when he resigned, the end of his term was coming up, so we did run into this con, would it need to have an election for the remainder of the term, only to have that person then have to run again if they want to be there for the full term.
And then it's on one term?
I'm sorry.
It's only one year.
That's correct, for the election, that's right. They're elected, and they'll have to run again if they want to come through. That's correct. For a full four-year term.
So they're going to let for...
Run. Tell that to campaign and run to camp.
Do it.
That's correct.
Is there anything else? We've got the employee, Chris, here on Doug's United, VIP room 630.
Correct. Put it in the mouth. I'll say to all the council members that dominated today, by the way.
Okay. Before I ask for the government's executive session for personnel reasons, I want to thank the media for all the attention they've gave to town of Tassau for the last seven years. We thank you very much. It's always positive. When you go out and go to Bristol or Richmond or Blueville, they talk about casual, you know, you're going to get jobs. And also I want to thank Todd and his staff and all the employees of the town of Tassau. Without them, all our events, all our stuff that we do did not happen. And thank y'all to my heart for a great job.
Thank you. One of the best things that this council ever did was get Todd Day down in Tassau. Thank you.
All right, motion to go to the executive session.
Soon moved.
Emily, if you would join us in the executive session, we appreciate that. All in favor say aye.